I suppose we're close enough. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. And before we get going, I'd like to thank the town of Jefferson for hosting this week's school board meeting. And if I could have a roll call, please, Steph.
Jay Akerman.
Here.
E. Flynn.
Here.
T. Giles. A. Hicks.
Here.
B. Jellison.
Here.
R. Luekonoff.
Here.
H. Randall.
Here.
K. Van Berg and Vito.
Here.
Would you please rise in the Pledge of Allegiance? Flag is in the air.
Pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then first item is consent agenda, one motion to approve the minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty five, and approval of the manifest.
So moved.
How's that?
Seconded by Evelyn.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I thought it was.
That's okay.
I know it came from that side.
We talked at the same time. It's all good.
Any questions, comments, deletions?
Okay.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on to the public comment period. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing none, the public comment period will remain open for thirty minutes. If you do have a comment you'd like to make in that time, please raise your hand. We'll stop what we're doing, and you will be recognized. And that moves us to the superintendent's report.
So it's, it's that time of year again where our general assurances need to be brought to the board and for the board's school board chair's signature in order for us to receive federal funds. So this is noted in our minutes and uploaded to the assurances that are in our Title I federal grants. Carrie is going to explain or present the athletic data that we put together the last two weeks. We have middle school and high school athletic data. And she's going to explain to you how to read this chart, and then I'm going to give you a minute to look at it so that you can ask clarifying questions.
So it's broken out by sport, and then also what the budget expenditures are on the side, like the base, the basic stuff that we do. So if you take a moment and just for an example, look down at varsity cross-country. You can see this year we had a total of twelve athletes. That's combined boys and girls. The total cost per athlete would be one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and nineteen cents. The total cost of this whole thing would be broken down as sixteen thousand one hundred and forty-two and twenty cents. But that includes the coach's salary, taxes, retirement, transportation cost, my salary and my benefits, officials, field trail maintenance, uniforms, supplies and equipment, district athletic insurance, like athletic insurance, family ID is the program we use for signing kids up. Fees, we pay about forty, at the high school level, we pay about forty-five hundred dollars a year to the NHIA to belong to them, and other things that might fit into that category. Individual sports fees, which are like tournament fees, wrestling, for example. Alpine skiing has higher amounts of sports fees, and then our portable toilets that we have outside. So those, generally when you look at my budget lines, those are the ones that you see. So if you go across, you will see we've broken it down by sport. You'll see the number of participants. Yes, there are duplicates, because we do have kids that are on varsity and JV and swing on both. So we do list them on both of them, for an example. So you will see that there are duplicates as you go across, and with the duplicates, it's like six, two-hundred-and-sixty-five bodies. But also, for example, if you, I think it was, we listed every single kid on here before we got to here. It was approximately one hundred and thirty-ish high school students out of the three hundred.
That are involved in.
That are involved in at least one sport.
Yeah, it's quite high percentage.
So.
Yeah, let's see.
And then you'll see that it's same, broken down the same way for middle school as well. And that number was pretty high as well for participants with middle school. So if you want to take a look and if you have any questions, Melissa and I would gladly answer.
So you can see which ones are the cost drivers, which ones are real expensive and which ones are not.
Thank you for putting this together.
Yes.
We've never really had a report like this, at least in the time I've been on the board, so it's really informative. One question I do have, these are all the expenditures, and I wonder about, we don't take any fees from students, athletes, right?
And we don't, we don't charge gate. The booster club covered that. I struggled with finding anybody to want to sit at the gate. We actually used to pay them to sit there, but we haven't had much luck with that. So this year, I asked the booster club, and they did it from the concession stand. So people had to be honest.
Right.
You know what I mean? But in a way, that money will eventually come back to our athletes, but it was collected by the booster club, the little bit that they got, yeah.
Okay. And when we do get money in from donations or booster club, where is that applied? What do we do?
SAF. Melissa, do you?
So depending on what the donations are intended for a specific sport, depending on monetary value, or if it's related to a fundraising activity, it can be deposited into a student activities fund. We did just create the revolving fund for athletics for those kind of, it will, main goal is for anything that we would charge for use of facilities would end up in there. Much larger donations by big organizations, things of that nature, not necessarily individual community, but community members.
So for an.
And it'll be used, you know, as.
So for an example, the, like, when the baseball team or the softball team, they're doing their fundraising, that goes into the SAF, and they each have an individual line item. And then I'm the one that will take in and out with Lisa Brooks in the main office. And it, we keep it all in line, so we know specifically what group has what money. And it's really the coaches come to me and like, we would like to purchase this. We'd like to purchase team uniforms. The baseball team is looking to purchase a, like a.
Turtle.
Turtle, thank you, Phyllis. A turtle to go over home plate when they're doing batting practice, so that we lose less gables, because our, or practice falls into the woods, because it's right there behind us.
What's a turtle? I'm not really sure.
It's a, it's a net. It's a, it's a big.
Backstop.
Yes, like it's a movable, portable backstop that goes over, like, home plate, like directly over home plate. And the kid is actually kind of in it.
Oh.
Um, right there.
Oh, that is quick. I was thinking about.
So they, they, I think they're approximately around five thousand dollars that they raised this, this spring. So their goal is to, they're, they range in prices, but that's their, that's what they would like. So.
Thank you.
For an example.
Uh, the individual sports fees line, Carrie, that's things like, like I assume wrestling, they have to pay to go to a match.
We pay.
Or skiing, we have to pay for tickets and.
Yes. So we pay Bretton Woods a lump sum as a contract.
Yeah.
To utilize their Alpine facility during the winter season for both middle school and high school.
Okay.
Um, and then that's one of our biggest ones.
Yeah.
Um, and then when you total up probably the wrestling, they're going to come close to it, because a, a lot of their, their weekend meets that we go to are approximately five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Per weekend.
Did you pay for the match?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to pay to go, or a school wouldn't be able to.
Host it.
Host it.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's with all the officials and everything, it is costly.
Okay. Thank you.
Carrie?
Yes.
So, just so I, because I'm fairly new to this, so under the MS and the HS categories, athletic programs, we're just looking at athletic director salary.
Yep.
Well, I, I, it might be a dumb question, but why is there two different, I don't want to say the numbers, it's probably public information, but why is there two different numbers here, one starting at forty-four, one at eighty-two?
Because I believe it's sixty at the high school, forty in middle school.
Percent.
You can see that.
Right next to it, sixty-five, seventy-five.
It's one number, but it's broken and it's different.
Yeah, the goal was to kind of develop a per pupil cost, so Carrie's kind of divided it along the world.
So what's the, so the number is eight, the larger?
Well, what it is.
Or is it combined?
You wouldn't add those two, but it's also the cost of New Hampshire retirement, healthcare.
Okay, including benefits.
Including benefits.
Yeah, include benefits.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That's great.
That's good work.
This is really.
So it is, can we help, can we have it and maybe talk about it next meeting? Just give a, like, there's a lot here. This is great.
There's a lot to analyze here, yeah.
Uh, but it's going to take a while to kind of, for me anyways, to sit and, and look through it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can put it in chat and ask them to analyze it for you.
Let's take, take some time off of it, Mary.
And if you have any questions you want to answer in advance, you know, email me and all.
Yep.
Perfect. Perfect.
Thank you for putting this together.
Thank you.
Yeah, Melissa put a lot of the figures, so.
Yeah.
She's the figure maker. If I may, I would like to give a shout out to Vicki Herzog, our accounts payable. She pulled a lot of invoices for the transportation. I have her staff, so she worked really hard to help us pull those out.
Thank you.
You know, we thought we would use this as a tool for every year.
Yeah.
To see, you know, where the comparisons.
Yep. No, this is, this is great to see. I've never seen it broken down like this.
I'd like to see that there's so many students involved.
Yeah, that's really occurred.
We're going to also do the same thing for the co-curriculars.
Yeah.
Yep, great.
Now that we kind of have a template.
We've got a format to work with. Yeah, that is great. It's very, very helpful.
This, this came up at our last ed programming and curriculum meeting, in part because, you know, as we're thinking about the tax tolerance that's been reached with our taxpayers, having been under two default budgets, and seeing an ongoing decades-long trend of decreasing enrollment, we have to start thinking, and we'll hear later from Rob about this, we have to start thinking a little bit about what the district can afford to offer. And so many thanks to you, Carrie, for being the guinea pig on putting some numbers to some of the activities that I think people don't necessarily think about comprehensively as a whole. And it is, it is really helpful to understand how many students are participating in these programs, and to understand the very true expense to provide those to our students and families without, without putting heavy registration fees and things like that on the individual students.
Yes, Evan.
I have one question. What's the difference between officials and game management? I'm sure it's a simple answer, but I.
I'm going to have Melissa answer that, because that has been something that's been tweaked in the last few years, and I always get a little confused.
The way I understand it is that Carrie can't be in two places at once.
Well, game management is, it's like, it's like Scott Holmes is at the games in Lancaster for emergencies, for, I mean, he's there because Carrie is at the high school or someplace else. You have to have, at least somebody there responding.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about the two, when we have officials in something else, budget line, which is very confusing for me to figure out which one comes out of which.
Yeah.
But yes, that's when either I can't make it to something.
Right.
And somebody else covers for us.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have an official person there. And officials are the people that are coming, that are assigned to actually rest the games.
Okay.
Um, so, just looking at it, so we calculating three hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine thirty, plus a hundred and forty-eight thousand thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents combined?
Yep.
So that's around five hundred.
Just under.
About five hundred grand. And there's total athletes for the MS is shy of two hundred, and two-sixty-five for the high school?
Well, that's, that's not the total number. That's, one kid could be participating in five sports.
Yeah, so like if there are three seasons. We do have that information. Wait there three times.
Total number of participants, where I go.
Total number.
Over, over.
Okay.
So for example, like, take James, if he did soccer and did varsity JV, you know what I mean? Then he did unified, and then he did varsity and JV baseball. That would be five sports that he would have been a part of, and he would have been a part of their transportation if he went to a JV game or if he went to a varsity game. So you had, that.
It makes sense to me in terms of team members.
Yeah, and we, we do have the date of how many students. We, we just collapsed it because it was.
No, this makes more sense.
I think, yeah.
The grand scale of it.
So basically, it's a half a million dollars for roughly five hundred kids.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think this information is really helpful to, for our, for our community.
Yes, when you get, yeah, when you get asked all the questions.
Yeah, and you know, we've seen that, you know, we have a very engaged, very interested segment of our community in the athletics program. And I, I think it's nice to be able to say, you know, there's opportunities for us to approach, you know, a fundraiser. You know, so you're interested in the sports program so much, but as we move ahead, and we do have to look at budgetary impact, you know, there, there might be opportunities for us to engage more with some serious direct fundraising within the community that has shown so much support and engagement with athletics.
Oh, should we have a public comment? If you just could stand, state the name and town?
Yeah, Bonnie Akerman-Jefferson. I mean, just happened to be within this moment of thirty minutes, I must want to make a comment. Just keep in mind, the athletics are for those chosen students too, right? So my son was not chosen to participate, was not chosen to be part of a teammate on senior year. So that five, half a million dollars are for chosen students, right? So JV, varsity, they don't have a hundred percent choice of being there. So if you're trying to cut budgetary things, kind of keep in mind, those are the few chosen students. Unfortunately, some of those chosen students are multiple athletes in multiple sports. So you might be actually choosing again for a very select group of students that you're putting those half a million dollars towards. Just up those cycles.
Thank you. So, any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is great.
Melissa, thank you.
Yes, it was a lot of work. So, a big thank you to Granite United Way. They, again, this year gave fifteen hundred dollars to the high school going to, for the food pantry. Um, we have four new hires, and even though there's only three on your list, because I just yearly hired somebody else. We had, Micah Pearl, she's going to be in Whitefield, a first grade teacher. She's a brand new teacher, just coming out of college. Although a bit muzzy, is going to be Whitefield fifth grade teacher. Alyssa Fryman, LES kindergarten teacher. Alyssa went to LES. And Emily Schaefer-Meyer, she's going to be special ed in LES.
Does Emily work for us before?
She is a para, and she, she's a para, and then she left her para position to become a student teacher, and now she's back tomorrow?
Um, Monday.
Monday.
Uh, following Monday after work.
Yeah. So, and then she is going straight into a master's program for special education, so she'll be on a state-based plan. So we have four very young, awesome teachers, yes.
Awesome. How many more openings are we?
Uh, you'll see later on, but we've got, we've got few, but we're not in danger of them.
Okay.
Um, do we have, we, I say we, like, it's my, do you all in the district space have a plan for hooking those really new teachers with mentors or preceptors along the way?
Yeah, they get hooked up with Kelly right away, and we have two days in August, thirteenth and fourteenth, for the new teachers to connect with their mentors and start there. Can I say something?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott.
All right. Seven-eight transition.
Have brights tonight, huh?
Tonight's the night.
Okay.
So there is a screen back here for the folks in the crowd. So, one of the things to keep in mind, we've done a ton of community outreach on this. We've talked to parents, we've talked to students, we've talked to teachers. And everybody but Mr. Akerman was a part of those conversations as a board member. Luckily, Mr. Akerman was the community chair of that committee, so he, you know, he has the background information as far as that type of feedback. So we're not going to dive into the community feedback, and, you know, the teacher feedback and the student feedback. This is solely looking at a number scheme, and what could happen down the road if we, as we are facing declining enrollments. So kind of the purpose of this is to maximize student programming through a transition, remain fiscally responsible for the district, while it's still trying to be student-centered, future-focused. There were some recommendations years ago from the blueprint for tomorrow, and then it was all the way back in October, you folks asked for this. And we wanted to kind of get through budget season, and we rolled that version out to the ed programming committee last month, and got some feedback on, you know, what to actually present today. So current enrollments, district-wide, we are looking at eight hundred fifty-six, or eight hundred sixty, and NASDAQ had us at eight hundred fifty-six. So it's holding pretty close currently. Okay, so that's something to keep in mind. We have our K-eight numbers up there, and our nine-twelve, is that too small for you guys?
Yeah, we, I can't see it.
It's a little small, yeah.
I can see it, except when you're standing in front.
I can't see it.
All right, so K-eight, we're looking, current in power schools, five hundred forty-five. At nine-twelve, we're at three hundred fifteen when the slide was built. Okay, when we look at projections moving down the road, next school year, so NASDAQ has us at eight hundred fifty-two, then followed by eight oh two, eight hundred, eight oh six. So you see there, there's a fifty-student cliff coming, and then it kind of holds steady for a little bit. And when you look at numbers in our K-six setting, they don't change drastically. They go from four sixteen to four oh five, four oh three, four oh three. Seven-eight, they increase a little bit. Nine-twelve is where we see our biggest decrease, so our high school population. We're going to go from next year approximately three hundred twenty-one to the following year, two hundred sixty-three, then followed by two hundred fifty-three. The, the other numbers that we included, if you, if you're to add them up, is what is the seven-twelve population? Because that plays a key in can we fit seven and eighth graders at the high school? Okay, so at max, we'd be looking at four hundred thirty-six students. At the very least, we'd be looking about three ninety-seven. That's seven-twelve if we were to bring them up.
And that, that's twenty-five, literally next year. That's that big year, that four thirty-six.
Yeah, the following year goes below four hundred.
Gotcha.
Now, one of the, as a committee, we thought was important is in the past twenty years, is to point out what has been the highest enrollment in that space. And that should indicate whether, you know, a cohort can fit in there that we're talking about. Okay, so at Lancaster in oh-five, oh-six, five hundred twelve suits. Whitefield in nine-ten, it's three hundred fifty-seven, and the regionals' highest population was in oh-six, oh-seven with five hundred and one students in the hallways. So there's three considerations, okay? I'm going to go through them a little bit at each time, but this is just a quick review of what they're going to look like. So the first one is to stay status quo. And what worries me about staying status quo is when you look at the high school population, two hundred fifty-three kids right here, we cannot, in good conscience, fiscally, continue to offer the program of studies that you folks just weeks ago raved about what we are able to offer our students, right? And when we look at programming, it's not just academics that we look at. CTE would not be immune to this, and we know what CTE has done for, for our students. But we cannot continue to offer our program of studies with two hundred and fifty-three kids, and that's just a reality. Furthermore, and, and you know, I've talked to Scott and I've talked to Cheryl about this, we've already stripped down middle school. We do bring them up for some CTE, but they're borderline hitting the basic academics, you know, from good teachers, but they don't have a lot of choice. And as the enrollments keep going down, what is that going to look like for our middle school population? You know, how much more are we going to be paring it down? So status quo, and, and we worked as a, as a district leadership team, I worked with Melissa. I'm not going to get into the exact numbers, but we were, we're going to be looking at reductions no matter what scenario you folks choose. Okay, that's just the reality. And we're looking at reductions at the central office, we're looking at potential reductions at the building administrative level, the professional teaching staff level, and our support staff level. We, we're not going to be able to continue with these type of enrollments, okay? That, that we know for sure. So status quo, and this is my opinion, we are going to be narrowing the program of studies for our junior high kids and our high school kids moving forward if we stay in our current configurations. Uh, back at one, scenario one, real quick. With the reductions, we're looking at potentially saving, and this is an estimate, okay? In like two years, don't come to me and be like, you told us this. But on today's market, right, we're looking at just south of one point seven million dollars in savings, knowing what we potentially are going to need to reduce, you know, as a, um, impact of declining enrollments. Scenario two, and, and we've talked about this, and we've talked about the pros, and we've talked about the cons, and we've heard from people. Moving seven and eight district-wide to the high school. And, and I had this conversation with the entire DLP. If we want to continue a program of studies remotely close to what we're offering, we have to put more kids in that building. And the only kids that it makes sense, in my opinion, is to move seven and eighth graders up there, unless people want to talk global consolidation, which I don't think other districts are there yet, and I don't think we're there yet. You know, we may be there in the future, but we've got to put kids in the hallways of White Mountains Regional High School to continue the program of studies that exists today. All right, so seven and eighth grade up there, you're looking at some similar staffing reductions, but shifting people. All right, so we would still see central office reductions, that, you know, you would still see some building-level administrative reductions, some teachings, some support staff, but then some, there would be some shifting to incorporate the seven and eighth grade at the high school. Overall, you're looking at just north of one point seven, so it's like one point two seven, two eight savings in, in budget. Today's money, best guess, estimate, don't hold me to it.
However, we might want to take some of that money to make some kind of infrastructure changes.
Yeah, there would be sort of like an initial hit.
Yeah.
For construction and, you know.
Say that again, Rob. The first one was one point seven, and this one was one point two?
So the first one would be about one point six nine eight.
So one point seven, yeah.
Yep, and this is one point seven two.
Oh, seven two, okay.
Definitely within the mark.
Those are pretty, pretty close.
I think we think of them as the same.
Yeah, they're, they're the same, because that's a difference between a family plan and a single person. Sorry. We've talked a lot about plans lately. Any questions on the seven-eight district-wide? Okay, and then the third option that we talked with ed programming is to move seven and eight district-wide and reconfigure your pre-K six at both elementaries. And there's three or four different models you can look at, and what that reconfiguration could look like. You could do a pre-K two in one building and a three-six in another, or you could bring the vast majority to one school and have an early childhood center in another. You could create some pretty cool opportunities for income through, through a model like that. Doing this, we would be about one point eight million dollars in savings with the, with the reductions, okay? About a hundred thousand more than the other two.
Yeah.
I would tell you this, if you folks decide to make a motion at some point to move seven and eighth grade and try to navigate this world, I worry about how it's going to impact kids and teachers and administrators district-wide. It's a lot of movement, but I told you I would bring, bring you all the scenarios, right?
The other thing is, with this, is you have the potential of elementary kids from twin, having to go all the way to Lancaster.
Right, yeah.
Right, well, and, and like I said, there's like six different ways that you could really dig it up. And if you folks wanted to entertain more of this, that's it, you know, that's work we would have to sit down as a, as a leadership team and, and dig through. And we probably would want additional feedback from the community if we're going to do something like that.
Well, because we heard from parents when we had this school bus driver shortage, how long the kids were on the bus, and, and now we're introducing something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would say that if we did decide to do option two, you know. I would say that if we did decide to do option two, you know, option three, some variation could be after, you know, get past the initial disruption, get that under our belt. We'd have some practice with it and then...
See where the numbers are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That makes sense.
You know, and I, like, when I think back to what the families were saying and some of the... I don't want to call them negative feedback because those are people's kids, right? They're hesitations. I understand some of them, you know, I don't want a seventh grader around a twelfth grader, you know? However, I think when we look at what we are here for, and it's to set kids up for success after high school. If we are narrowing our curriculum and our program of studies for our seven-through- twelve kids, I think we're gonna be doing them an injustice. I've seen it in other schools in the area. You know, I'm not here to point fingers, but there are a lot of schools that when you get to high school, if you want a class outside of a very basic twenty credit, it's all Velax or Mentum. It is not face-to-face interactive with peers, you know, in a traditional, authentic classroom.
Well, and I think too, when you look at our program of studies, certainly there are classes that are restricted to a particular grade level if we're talking about ELA, for example, or we're talking about the tiered approach to mathematics or science where you have to have one class before you can take the next. There are some grade restrictions, but there's a lot in our program of studies that's really about helping students own their own learning and that allows for students to really work to their strengths and could be open. Rob, I remember a few years ago you talked about an interest on the part of Perkins to really engage seventh and eighth graders more, and that's why we got to the place where we were transporting students. Can you just kind of refresh our collective memories about where Perkins is looking in terms of engaging those, shall we call them junior high, if we're living there?
Yeah, so they really wanted to start with Perkins Five legislation that went into place five years ago. There was this big push for early awareness about what career and technical ed was. Because a lot of times by the kids, by the time kids were getting to high school, they've never heard about it. You know, them and their families have never heard about it. And it was always viewed as the old vocational program for a certain population of kids. So Perkins Five now allows us actually to go down to fifth grade if you wanted to. We focused on seven and eighth grade. But with that said, in our first year of it, we did bring seven and eighth grade. We did have two buses. But because of budget cuts to address default budgets, we had to pare it down to one bus. So now, eighth graders get it, it's mostly eighth graders, right? All eighth graders. Seventh graders aren't participating currently. And Lancaster gets one quarter, then Whitefield gets the next, then Lancaster, then Whitefield because we couldn't afford a second bus when we're looking at a default budget. So those are the types of things that I worry about as we continue to lose enrollment and if we stay in our status quo configuration. What else is gonna have to start getting cut to provide an even more basic, no-student-choice education?
One of the things I'll say that we've seen a lot, we've heard about it in Ed Programming for a couple of years now, and the board, most of you know that we've seen a rapid increase in the number of students who have done just that. They've leaned into their career planning, their future planning for secondary, you know, the next step of their education. And they've approached us for early grad plans. And really, it's been exceptional. When I first came onto the board, it was almost a never-heard-of thing. Now, I don't remember how many we had last year, Patsy, do you remember? It was four, three or four?
Three or four, yeah.
Four, three, successful, completed, enough.
And they're coming at us not with, I want to get out of here, I don't want to be here anymore kinds of plans. They're saying, this is what I want to do. I'm passionate about my career, and I feel successful in planning for it because of the opportunities I've had at the regional, the classes I've been able to take, the access I've had to community placements, the access I've had to connected programs with our community colleges, whatever those things are. And I think we're seeing among some of our students now a real interest in figuring out how to get to the workforce more quickly, rather than spending six, eight years in a college setting and accruing college debt. That's possible for Spartans because of what we have in our program of studies and because we have such a skilled and diverse set of educators on campus, frankly. And I just, it would be so sad to start to backslide on the offerings at the regional. What was the CTE? Yeah.
Now, one of the things, you know, I feel my job is to advise, not tell you folks what to do, but kind of advise, give you the information so you can make your best decision about how to move. However, if a decision could be made prior to the summer of what twenty-six, twenty-seven looks like, or is twenty-seven, twenty-eight, the amount of work that the elementary schools, that Mike and Patsy and their team are going to have to do, the work we're gonna have to do at central office to pull this off. Because we've heard stories about transitions that were decided at the last minute and how those still struggle today, right? But if we could spend this summer starting to be very thoughtful and intentional about, you know, what do we need exactly for facility needs? What do we exactly need for staffing? If we're gonna ask high school teachers, yes, they are certified five-through- twelve, some of them seven-through- twelve, to start teaching some middle school courses, they're gonna need some professional development in how to deal with seven and eighth graders, right? So, the sooner you folks can come to, you know, a conclusion on what direction you want to go, the more time, you know, our team has to have better plans in place to ensure that it's successful for all.
I think for us to be able to do, first thing we need to do is get it out to the community. Get it out to the newspapers, publicize it. But maybe we could set up for, say, the second May meeting to actually have an action and agenda item.
I think that makes sense, Rob, because we need to give folks in the community the opportunity.
Right, to give us feedback, just yell at us.
Do you want a Google survey to go out of, what do you want to do?
We've done extensive research, and we're here.
Saying this is what we're considering, well, I can ask right now.
But we have that data. We know that, we've asked those questions.
I know, I didn't stop saying is we need to let them know that we're moving forward. And, I mean, I can pretty much ask right now, we're looking at option two, correct? Or is that not something you want to make in a decision?
Yeah. I guess, I guess we're talking two different things now. If you're saying to me, if I had to choose one of those right now, yeah, option two is obviously what I'm leaning towards, but I would like some more information before I made any sort of...
That's what I'm saying.
But I don't, I don't want, it's not that I don't want public input. We know what the community feels, we've done, we've sent out the polls, we've heard, we've had the committee. We know what's gonna hold us back there. I want to know things like, what is it gonna look like? It's one point eight million dollars in savings, but how? What are we talking? Are we down two administrators and four teachers?
We had that information.
Do we need to build a new gym? Those are the things that I would like to know before I decide. What's the...
I want to know, we have to give up.
If we get all that information by the first meeting in May, and then it gives us two weeks to digest it.
Yeah, we can do, we can do Rob Scott 2.0 at the next meeting where we have some of these additional ones. I wasn't comfortable tonight giving out what the actual, I have, where the, you know, staffing changes regardless, status quo or this.
And if it's personnel, we should be doing it in, yeah, anyways. But, but that's the stuff that I'm going to need.
To make a final.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's real, it's affecting, it's going to affect teachers, it's going to affect staff. That's, you know, we need to, we need to make sure that we're thoughtful about how we proceed with this.
Absolutely.
So, when Mr. Holmes and I co-chaired this specific thing last year, when I wasn't on the board, I was just a parent volunteer. So I was tasked with getting the community feedback. And I was definitely tasked to do it, and I thought I did a great job. And I can't say honestly that there was maybe even one person that agreed with this transition, seven-eight transition, like every single one that I got back. And we all went through it, Scott, myself, and the group. Then we reported it to you guys. I don't, I don't remember even recalling one parent slash guardian that even wanted to even, you know, think about this. That's gonna be a...
I think, I think one of the things that was very useful about that is we know, we know what the negative opinions are or the concerns that people have about it. And I think we have answers for those things. And we also know that some people will never like this plan. You know, at staff, there's some staff who won't like it, there's, you know, some families who won't. But I think we also can counter that and address some of that with a lot of what you said tonight. You know, we have, you know, seven and eighth graders that are looking forward to coming up to the high school because there's so many cool things going on here. And if we tell them, well, actually, you know, we're gonna have to cut those things that you were interested in, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's a compelling argument. And yeah, some kids are gonna be on a bus longer. I wish we could shrink our district geographically, but we can't. We live where we live, we just have to...
And I think the concern, I know my concern at the time when I did that survey was my fifth grader, my fourth grader, my third grader going from Twin to Lancaster. If my seventh or eighth grader is going to the regional, they do that when they're participating in sports anyways. They're getting on a bus after school to go to Lancaster to go back to the high school. It actually is gonna be less time than that, you know? So, we know more about it at this point. If this is the route that we're seriously talking about going, as well as at the time, I don't remember talking a lot about the programming changes at the high school that we're gonna have to come if we didn't, if we didn't look at this. If we didn't, and like you said, we were all, as Rob said, so happy to see that program of studies in front of us and what we are able to offer. We don't want to see that go away. And so if this is, if this is a way to justify keeping that and it's gonna allow that to happen, I think we really have to give it serious consideration.
And I think it's a compelling, you know, it's a compelling issue to bring to the parents.
The other thing that I think is really compelling is that we spend a lot of time talking about being student-centered, and we talk a lot about the, I'll call it the immediate family of SAU thirty-six, our students, our educators, our administrators, and the parents of those students. But our district is much bigger than that. Our district includes all of the other community members who are on the hook for the tax burden of operating these schools. And it is important, it's very important to make sure that we're approaching this with an eye to educational rigor, that we're approaching this with an eye to the development of graduates that are going to be highly functional in our societies. But we also have to do it with an eye to the fact that we've just been put under two successive default budgets because our taxpayers, many of whom do not have children in the schools right now, just can't shoulder more burden. And so if we can offer up a million and a half relief instead of three hundred thousand dollars more in a budget, I mean, kudos to the district leadership team this year for putting together a budget that was so, so close to last year's default. But we know that that has happened with trimming and trimming and trimming and tightening and tightening and putting more and more pressure on the staff and resources that we do have to do more. And you just, at some point, you can't do more with less, you have to do less with less. And when we look at some of the numbers that you're talking about, Ben, even though we're within, you know, three hundred thousand dollars on the difference, not even three hundred thousand. When we look at, you know, the difference in pricing from option one and option two, there's the dollar amount, but there's also the amount of staff that would be lost between those options. And as I recall, and you know, as Rob said, we need to think carefully about getting into more specifics than this, but we actually will lose fewer folks in option two, fewer staff members than we would in option one for about the same cost savings. And so there's, you know, staff people whose families, you know, rely on their salaries, that matters too. It's so multifaceted, and we've been through this as a district three times already as schools have closed, you know, around the district. It's never easy to say we're compressing because our, as you say, our geography doesn't get any smaller, right? But the number of students we need to educate is getting smaller. And the tax burden is continuing to grow to that point. I would say it's budget season in Concord, folks. And if you haven't reached out to talk to your elected officials in Concord about what is happening or not with the funding for public schools, there's still time. The governor doesn't sign something until June. But we're just looking at the House budget that's just come out. There's this rapid increase in vouchers that's gonna peel away from public school dollars with no accountability for the quality of education that's being offered behind them. We're talking about offering rigorous education to students in our district by educators that have been appropriately vetted, who do understand the pedagogy, who are experts in their field, and doing it for less money than we've been able to do it before by moving seven and eight to the regional campus. And we've kind of hit that point. The writing has been on the wall for a while. And I can't say enough about the gymnastics our district leadership team has done to avoid a shift like that. But if we don't do it this year, it's coming, it's coming. We can see it in the enrollment numbers. And it's not a new and wild and unusual trend. We've had decreasing enrollment for thirty years in this district. It's not going back up. We're gonna have to make the squish at some point.
So, the Hartwood School is, as we all know, is a private, our public charter school, based here in my town, our town. So, I heard through a little birdie that came to my ear once. I don't disclose the information that I get, but they're actually laying off teachers, beginning... They're gonna pay them off throughout the summer, but then the teachers are gonna be laid off from the Hartwood School. I didn't get the information why they're being laid off. I inquired to this individual, and they said that the enrollment is... So, the bubble was great when it started. Everybody wanted to go to Hartwood School, it was a new thing, a new fad, everybody was happy. So now, what, year two into this, is Hartwood, about two years now we've been in Hartwood?
No, Hartwood's been open three or four?
Yeah.
Two, three, maybe?
So I think the bubble's popped. This is all, again, this is all conjecture. I don't even know if this is factual, but I do know that this individual teacher is being laid off. And now she's looking into the St. John's Re Academy School or Profile. So, that's something to consider, I don't know. But this thing with the voucher program, how is that gonna help our Coas County and our area if we only have one charter school, but there's no other charter schools other than North Country Charter and Lancaster? It's not gonna really help us.
It won't help us because the vouchers can be used for a number of things. They can be used to go to private school anywhere else, they can be used for folks who are homeschooling.
A different district too.
Vouchers aren't used for charter schools though.
No, vouchers aren't used for the public charter schools.
They're public, yeah.
So, again...
They use for homeschool for, or parents can use that money to buy equipment, computers for their kids. They can, with no accountability attached to that money.
I mean, I'm for homeschooling as well, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna deviate from that. But I just look at it like, and I also read the budget that if this budget gets passed, that the students' parents can choose any public school that has space available. So if they don't like our district, they can go to Profile, they can go to Grofton.
Do then we have to pay for the transportation?
Not the transportation, but we do have to pay the tuition.
But we lose that revenue.
But we might also lose the tuition from the state.
We pay the tuition eighty percent of what per student, we pay.
Right, to a different district.
But we might also, on the flip side, we might be receiving students from other communities, Grofton or where...
Yeah, it's a slippery slope, I think.
That could ruin a town like Grofton.
Yeah, that's a slippery slope in my opinion.
What, I mean, this, the voucher program, and they're talking about no income limit. So, basically, people that are already sending their kids to private school, and now they're just gonna get a check from the state, education funds, it's welfare for the wealthy. While they're cutting...
Digress here.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
But it does have a financial impact on the district.
And like, if you look at Twin, where Ben lives, they've been wanting to separate from our district for a long time, I mean, you know, that's just a fact. How do we, if this passes and she signs it, our governor... Um, how do we, if this passes and she signs it, our, our governor, um, how do we know that then the people from Carolin kinda wanna just say, alright, well, excuse my language, what the hell, with White Mountains, we're gonna send them to Profile? Or we're gonna send them to a, a school that has a better, on the Niche scores? How do we know that this gonna?
Well, if they have to provide their own transportation and there has to be room.
Room available.
Yeah, at the, at the senior school.
Yeah, it just seems.
If it were to pass, that's, you know, that's the other thing, is, is this is, this is legislation that's sitting there now that they're, so we can hope.
If it passed the House, it's gonna go to.
Yeah, so we can hope that cooler heads will prevail there and they'll understand, I mean, that will devastate public education in many, many areas.
Yeah, and we're already down to. Eight hundred and, eight hundred and fifty-six kids.
Yeah, we got an agenda, right?
Yeah. So, still, I think we need to get out to the public that we're considering it.
So I'm asking, what would you like us to do to get our student?
Press release.
Press release, okay, we will do that.
Yeah, so that, they have the opportunity to come to that meeting.
To the first meeting in May.
That we are gonna be discussing it, yeah.
May eighth? May eighth?
If you folks, maybe by the end of vacation week, give me a, a list, maybe via through Bob, or however you wanna handle it, of additional information you might want presented to you at that first May meeting.
Yeah, okay.
That way I have time to work with some folks to get that information together.
Yeah, that's fine. I think I would not, I would rather not put the press release out there for the May eighth meeting. It makes more sense to me to get the information from Rob so we can process it. And then perhaps the second meeting in May, we can.
For a vote, the first week of Ju- the first meeting in June, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly, I thi- I think that's still, I mean, June, I mean, it's a month, it's still, you still have the summer and it gives us, I'm, yeah, I'm not, yeah. Sometimes we get a lot of information and have to act on it quickly and I, I don't like that.
Yeah, that's unnecessary, okay, I agree.
I like to, I think if we, we just take an extra meeting, we get the information and then we'll be a little better versed in answering questions, sir.
So when do you, when do you plan on doing an official vote on this then?
First, first meeting in June, okay.
Not until June.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And that's all I have for my report.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to Director of Finance.
No, I think, no, we've got Alexis there, Alexis is there.
Oh, really?
No, it's Director of Finance.
I think it's because Melissa.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, not gonna, um, um, just to touch on, we added an action agenda item um, to kinda authorize in advance related to some of our transportation needs for specific families. Um, we did it not in perpetuity, it's gonna be basically renewable on an annual basis in case the amount changes or something of that nature, so I just wanted to kind of slip that out there.
So in essence, we'll vote and then those bi-weekly, that.
That's what we talked about last night.
Yeah, they will be then in the following manifest, similar to how some of the people will work.
Nice, cool. Thank you for doing that, Alexa.
Yeah, thank you. Um, everybody's pretty happy about it, they think it's gonna benefit everybody, so that was a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
Um, and then I did not have time to print, day got away from me a little bit, but our current fund balance at the moment, we're about four hundred and six thousand, again, continuing to work.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions for Alexa? Alexis, the Student Council, Student Board Member.
Um, so for the Structure and Finance, I have no report, yay. Um, for the District Culture, um, so we had a guest speaker come into, um, White Mountains. Uh, her, uh, name is Courtney Stowem, she was a two thousand nine White Mountains grad. And she came to talk with upperclassmen and underclassmen separately, basically just about how, um, uh, you goal set and how it's okay to say like yes to certain opportunities that arise and just basically, um, different pathways that you can take when you leave high school. She also had a small group discussion with some of her girls, cause it was, um, Women's Month thing. And, um, she was talking about empowering women and then some motivational information for them, which was nice. And then on March twenty-third, the high school hoster, hosted the Cinderella Project. In the auditorium, there were over five hundred dresses from, donated from Betty D's and New York Consignments. And they were all given away, well, not all of them, they were given away for free. And there was about, let me see, a hundred and fifty dresses that found new homes.
Nice.
Uh, there was free food and drinks available and there were student volunteers and this was all organized by like Volocar and it was very great, um, for the teaching and learning. The FFA went to their New Hampshire State Convention on March twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, hosted at the Mount Washington Hotel, and there were some individual achievements that they got. The Forest Street Tree, the Forest Lead Team got second overall with Briar Foregarden placing first individually. For state degrees, Nolan Morse and Madison Osgood, uh, received those. For the proficiency awards, Madison won her category and specialty animal production and paperwork will be sent to the national level. Also maple sugaring, they had an opening weekend, which was very successful, heard it from a bunch of different people. Uh, they jumped over fifty gallons of maple syrup this season. And then a field trip went up there and they viewed the barn and where they make the maple syrup, which I heard was great as well. Robotics went to their regional competition in Lewiston, Maine. So what I heard from this was it was part of New Hampshire, Vermont, and Maine. And they competed against each other, they competed against thirty other schools and ended up being semifinalists. And they were mentioned in the Lewiston Sun Journal a few times. Um, so basically how this competition worked was in January, they were given all the like requirements and they had to build a robot from it, which is very interesting, they had it till March to do that. They built, programmed, and tested their robots and they were up against many schools who had, um, more funding, you could say. And the, their, um, like teachers were retired engineers and scientists. And from what I heard, all the kids had a great time that they went up. Um, and they basically had to test the robot's ability to hang, throw, and lift objects. So it was very interesting, they also had to be very fast and the team did great apparently. Um, on March twenty-sixth, NHS went to the Lancaster Elementary School to do arts and crafts with kids third grade and below. The kids were very interactive and NHS members who went down loved it and really enjoyed the opportunity to get involved in their community. April tenth, juniors took the SATs and the students were very respectful and stayed quiet and the practices were amazing. Um, another thing I wanted to add was the Bennett, Bennett Brooks Memorial Scholarship was presented to the kids, which is a very great opportunity. Um, it is essentially a different type of scholarship available for kids who are taking that, um, traditional four-year college route. And it provides them an opportunity to do, go into vocational, um, types of schooling and gives them funding for that. So they have over eighty-five thousand dollars worth of scholarship money and it's just all being given away this year.
Wow.
Right.
Um, yeah, it really is. Last month, April eleventh through the twelfth, the Youth and Government Kids went down to an overnight in Concord at the YMCA Youth and Government Model Legislative Program. Zoe Brown was on the Governor's Council and Elizabeth Mooney was in the press corps. Leanna Sloss's bill was recognized to be one of the five best written bills of the Congress. Um, Frank Lombardi and James Cromer were the advisors for the trip and orchestrated the meeting of one of our New Hampshire, um, representatives, Lori Pro- Corson.
Corson.
And New Hampshire Senator David Roach.
Also a regional grad, yeah.
Yes, so this was a very, um, amazing opportunity that was presented to our kids. It was in a huge thanks to our two advisors, Frank Lombardi and James Cromer, because they organized this and no other school got this opportunity to meet with those people.
Wow.
Yeah, so that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
So I have a question about the, the Bennett Brooks, uh, is that Reverend Brooks's son?
Yes.
Who, uh, tragic passed away?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, um, okay, so, I don't know. So they have eighty-five thousand dollars worth of scholarship money that's gonna be handed out this year to this, these non-traditional kids, right?
Yes.
So may I ask where that eighty-five thousand came from?
I'm not really sure, honestly, it was just.
Oh, Nancy's got it.
Yeah, it was money that was donated in Bennett's name, um, like around the time of his passing. And so, um, Pastor Brooks is, um, taking applications for that and he'll determine who the recipients are based upon need. And it's, um, not just kids at our school, but North Country kids.
So it's eighty-five thousand that were, uh, donating his name by people like us?
Family, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Wow, is that a one-year thing?
Yes.
So one.
One of them.
Good, great, thank you.
Lots going on.
Lots very much.
I wonder, I have an idea, I wonder if it would be possible to have, um, like occasionally, maybe like an eighth grader from each of our schools come and give like a similar sort of report.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
It might be a fun.
Yeah, one right there, she knows, right there.
There we go, we got a volunteer.
Hey, she just raised her hand.
Sorry, I saw it.
Once a year, so it doesn't have to be like a big event, but it would be, I think it would be really interesting for us to have and, and might be a good opportunity for a while.
Yeah.
I'll have them meet with Alexis for guidance.
Yeah, I have a mentor here.
It's just nice to know that there's a sort of feeder program.
Alex, thank you, Lexi, thank you.
Yeah, well, the reps.
Report as usual.
Yes, thank you very much.
Good job, Alexis.
Have another cookie.
Sorry, promise someone else.
See, they just did the dresses.
You're right. Do people give the dresses back?
No, no, no.
No, you keep them.
If you want to, you can donate it back to the.
They found the new one.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, there was a.
Saves a big chunk of money for total.
Yeah, oh my gosh.
Do they have clothes for men?
Yeah, uh, they have, they have tuxes as well, there wasn't a ton of, I don't think there was a ton of, um, people who went for tuxes, it was a lot of dresses, but we were.
They need to do French jamming in Cinderella.
It's a special day, right? Special day.
Yeah, but there were a lot of dresses, like, given away and it was amazing, actually.
That's awesome. And, uh, kudos to, uh, who was it? Molly Carr?
Okay, any other questions for Mo- Alexis?
Can we send her a thank you note on behalf of the board?
I can do that.
Please, thank you.
That, that's really nice.
Next, we get to Committee Reports.
Write a passage.
Ed Programming.
Uh, well, you just heard Mr. Scott's report, um, for Ed Programming, I, but I'm gonna take advantage of the open floor to say, Marion, can we also make sure that there's a thank you to, um, the advisors for Youth and Government for coordinating that really special opportunity to meet with elected officials?
Write a gym, right?
Cause that's pretty exceptional, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, so Ed Programming, uh, we meet again in a couple of weeks, I think.
Yeah, I think the seventh, maybe.
Seventh, something like that, and then, uh, we'll hopefully be talking a little bit about community service at that meeting.
Yes, that's an excellent.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Herb?
Nope, that's it.
Next is Facilities.
Okay.
Evelyn.
Right, um.
Go Evelyn, you're on the spot.
You have it.
Are you?
Look at it. Um, you have a copy of this, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the first one is the, um, the, the door monitoring, I mean, um, yeah, the door monitoring.
At Central Office.
It's Central Office, where we talked about that last meeting. And, um, we're waiting for bids on the upper parking lot. Um, we discussed the nurses, this is a big one. The nurses', uh, office renovation, uh, at, at West.
Whitefield, yeah.
And we, we really need to have it as ADA compliant, uh, con- con- compliant.
Yeah, I, I, I think the big thing with this one is we have a, a student that as they get older, we are not gonna be able to meet our obligation to this student.
Yeah, we couldn't even, he's gonna require a Hoya lift soon and there's no way we could fit a Hoya lift in the nurse's bathroom. And then say nothing about trying to change him and so it, it's imperative that we bring that up to the ADA requirements, absolutely. So, now, the next one is the high school roof drains. Right now, we have a lot with a forty-five degree bend and it's really, uh, creating a problem, as you can imagine, with drainage. So we wanna replace them to make a straight run, less water problems are always good. Um, and then we're gonna go to a high school bandroom air handler. The unit in place presently is original to the building. Need I say more? It needs repair and Rob was saying that they were having a hard time finding parts because.
It's sixty years old.
Yeah. So, we're getting more information on replacement, we'll keep you updated on that. And then, um, the high school roof is on schedule, it's gonna start on June seventh, right after school's finished. Uh, using unused budget funds for that, that's gonna be good, because then we're done with the, the roof, right? That, yeah, that was, this is the one part that we didn't have finished yet. And the, um, White, uh, Whitefield Boiler, uh, with, meeting with Siemens, the, the team's gonna meet with Siemens to discuss replacement. Again, the unit in that building is original, so need I say more, you just, there's times you just.
That's thirty years old.
You have to, yeah, you have to, no, that's, uh, Whitefield.
Oh, I went Lancaster, Lancaster.
Oh.
Boiler in Lancaster, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, it, it, it's, it's the original bill, uh, uh, unit and it's, it's time, you just keep fixing something. And, uh, the high school athletic fields, they're, they're having a real problem with pooling, especially in outfield and first base. So we're getting quotes for dr- drainage repairs, I, Rob was explaining that there was one part that already has it done, but we need it down here now, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just, um, getting the outfield of the softball field to dry appropriately. And it's also used, uh, previously as a field hockey field, but now as a second soccer field. And that needs to be addressed before we even consider spending money on loan on that other area.
Before we read, yeah.
And that's it, we're busy all the time.
Thank you. Marion, or, sorry, Rob, um, just at some point, if you could ask Gary to contact James to maybe do a tour of facilities, so he can be more familiar with.
You won't hear from Gary for a week and a half. But when he gets back, we'll make sure.
Still, you have no rec.
Yeah, he's in Phoenix.
Um, just, I just would say to the board, if before our May meeting, you get an opportunity to just meet Rob, if you happen to be outside the high school for some reason and you see him, have him show you what we're gonna be coming to you in May asking for money for, which is that upper parking lot mitigate, water mitigation.
Oh, boy, yes.
Um, the water, and I didn't realize it until we get out there and looked at it.
The damage by the windows.
But the water is literally coming back into the building.
Yeah.
So when it, you know, when it rains, when it comes off the roof.
The weights, yeah.
And so it's, when I first said, I'm like, I don't know if we really, but once you get out there and see it, you'll, so if, if you get five minutes.
Or if we have to park in the mud.
Or, well, that's, yeah, that too, but if you get five minutes and you're up there and you see Rob, have him just show you so you, you really understand why we're looking at this.
And I think I mentioned it previously, but we have been fortunate that whoever did the caulking on those windows knew what they were doing. Cause that's the only thing holding the water from actually entering the classroom.
That has to be taken into.
And that's only gonna hold up so long.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and then, question for Facility. Personnel, we met on April seventeenth and you'll see in the action agenda we ran through all of the contracts for non-CBA and, um, office and administrative contracts. So we'll go through that when we get to non-public. And that's it, and policy.
We hope to get the spring updates soon.
The what?
The spring updates, and then we'll be very busy in policy.
Okay, and District Wellness.
We have a facilitators meeting coming up in May, um, the week of the eighth, does that feel right?
It's, it's soon, yeah.
Yeah, it's soon, yeah, except for vacation. So we'll let you know after that.
Thank you. Bring on to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Bring on any new business.
I do, oh, go ahead, Chris, you're first. Mine's first and fast, just how cool was the bus, the bike bus in Lancaster, uh, yesterday?
That was the neatest thing to see.
For the kids.
Yeah, if, if folks didn't get a chance to see it, I will just tell you, was it, there were kids that met at the town hall and at Colonel Town, Lancaster PD provided an escort so that they could ride their bikes right down the roadway to school. And it was coordinated, I think, by NGHS, was that right?
NGHS.
Or what, Yalta, maybe?
And Yalta, yep.
Yep.
Wow.
So cool to see, just super, super cool to see.
Those are cute kids.
And so shout out to the, the students that were involved in helping to make that happen and the teachers who.
How was that originated?
How was that originated?
Which is a bad. So they, Yalta, I guess, had a, um, it's in Leaders and Learners this week, so there's a thing to read about there, but um you know, just an effort to get kids thinking about being outside, being, you know, exercising and the like, and it was just, it was wild, like Lancaster went to school on their bikes on Wednesday, it was very, very cool, yes, yeah, and the PD from it's a four.
Yeah, I'm a, uh, oh, please, sir.
That was.
Yeah.
Did they escort them on the way home too?
They, most of the parents for the little kids came and got the bikes during the day, and then the older kids that ride bikes anyways or walk, just didn't.
Oh. Oh, okay.
They just went home again, yeah, it was so great.
Ben, do you have something?
I do, it's just I'm with my board but parent hat on and I know and I see, we have all our administrators here tonight, so our building administrators. We've, I, my family in the last two weeks has gone on five field trips. And I have done the same form five different times. And it is three to five pages depending on which, which version they send home.
And sometimes you write their name twice on the same page.
I write their same, yep, so is there a way that we can either put that stuff on file or is there a way to make that more streamlined?
Yeah.
Power School.
Scott, I just got your eye, cause I see you're doing this and smiling, but I assume you guys hear this all the time.
Oh, just have, yeah. But, yeah.
Yes.
How bad a consent form that you could just, you know, say, yes, I consent to the trial one or the baseball one.
Yeah, so is. I, I don't know, I don't know what works, I don't know what works for the district, but I would think there would be a way that we could
Yeah.
is, cause I'm sure I'm not the only one that goes, okay, we're, I mean.
Even if we could somehow figure it out through Power School, where we could like go in and tick off, yes, this health form is still accurate, so that
Oh, okay.
cause like I get the sense that like you have to have forms in hand when you're out in community with the kids, so that makes perfectly good sense to me, and that things can change from one field trip to another, but you, you've done such a nice job plowing things, I'm gonna hop right on your bandwagon then, um, you've done such a nice job
Go ahead.
you know, getting things organized in Power School, we're doing health forms on an annual basis, we're updating our y'all know what homeroom these kids are sitting in, like there's gotta be a way to sort of like sign the consent form, verify that your health form is up to date in Power School and then let you guys print whatever you need to print to take into community, but.
Well, and I go, I was gonna go one step further.
And I have a really long last name and your forms don't give me space big enough for my last name, so just saying.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Cause I, I see Jeremy sitting there and I'm gonna, as long as we're all, I would even go as far as to say, could we buy a couple of iPads or whatever to have?
Yeah.
So maybe the stuff could be electronic and we could, you could just go, okay, Mrs. Such and Such, here's your field trip today, here's an iPad, here's how you access the stuff should you need it.
Having worked in a hospital, they're gonna want paper forms if you show up in a yard with a kid, like, uh, would you think, like, they're gonna want, yeah, but.
Then we don't have to have. Something wow.
Technology.
Anyway, there, maybe there's a way, maybe there isn't, maybe this is the solution, but I would think that one, that we could maybe get it down to one age.
Please.
Be like a gentleman.
I would just say I've been doing the same solution for fifteen years as a parent in the district.
Yeah.
We will look into this.
There are options.
Do you really wanna go on this field trip?
Go ahead, Scott.
There are options through Power School, we have to, we have to look at it, we don't currently have it in SAU thirty-six. There's also an option through family ID that we sign up for athletics to use field trips, so we need, as a district field trip team, we probably should put that on the next ELT plan
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
and figure out which way we wanna do it, but I would agree with you, everybody that's saying it's absolutely ridiculous, especially we have three kids in the school, it's just non-stop field trip forms and.
Six pages, I must write a name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, E collect was a cut item a few years ago.
Okay.
So it's about forty-three hundred dollars.
Okay.
You want it, we can add it back in.
Okay, great.
I, I was just gonna mention family ID because you know, my, my son was, you know, sports all the time and, and theirs was really nice because it just remembered from year to year, I could just, uh, season to season, I could just sign in.
Even Power School does from year to year when you're doing annual forms.
Yeah. Yeah, so it was, it was just really convenient there.
Okay, we, we'll get a team on that.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right. Dad, I got a cookie for that.
Any other new business?
Yes, you do, you know, ask it now.
Any new business?
Ask it now.
Any new business? So I wanted to, uh, so at Lancaster, there was a, uh, one of our hero teachers, um, no, I, thank you, I had one, um.
Ben, Ben.
So one of our hero teachers, uh, one of the chi- children choked um, on something, I don't know what it was, and obviously no names, but so one of the children choked, uh, luckily the, uh, the teacher was trained in uh, the Heimlich maneuver, old school Heimlich.
Yeah, we did that.
And I know we've already rehashed this, but um, so I asked uh, 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 Ms. Brady if um, if there's any of these, so they have a new device out there that doesn't require anything, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's called an Autovac. Um, and anyone can use it, it's um, it's basically like the thing you use for your toilet and you put it in, you, like a plunger.
Plunger. Yeah.
But it's uh, it works incredible, it's endorsed by the National Nurses Association and all kinds of emergency nurses association. So, and they're not really that expensive, they're like thirty dollars apiece. So I was inquiring about um, getting a grant from.
One for each school at least.
I, I like to get at least like several for each school, one at the main office, one for the nurses station, one at the gym, one in the gla- cafeteria.
Yeah. Lighters, yeah.
And maybe even one in like a backpack if they wanna um, a, a field trip. So I asked um, several different people and no one really knew if there was any grants out there available, like the DOS, or the safety or whatever, HHS. So um, I'm gonna inquire about possibly getting a grant um through the resources that I have, um, to try to see if we can maybe get a grant to buy some of those, I don't know what you guys' all opinions about that is.
What is the name of it?
I don't, I, I can get a few, I don't have it offhand, um, I, there's several different versions.
I have one, no.
The Autovac, I think it was called, um, but I, I can look it up, uh, Marion.
Think I, my only question would be, would it be good to run it through the wellness committee to make sure that the, that the health staff is on board and under, especially if there maybe are different types?
Yeah.
That they are, yeah, that, that, they may have a preference or the, you know, rather than just kinda them showing up on the doorstep one day and go, here you go, maybe just involve them.
They can choose it.
They might have a preference.
Yeah, Kristen and I can.
Yeah.
You're in wellness though now, right?
Yeah, yeah, he's on wellness.
Yeah.
So bringing up.
Yeah, well, I just think about funding wise, um, if we can't get any.
This one's safety to um, capital funds. We may have funds for it.
Possibly, possibly, I mean, they're not expensive, they're thirty bucks each, so we had like five per, per thing, yeah.
You know, there's a, a trend now to hang of um, emergency response boards in public places like schools, and I think the Littleton schools have them in place now too, you guys might enlist one as well.
Yeah.
Um, that where like it's the AED, it's in a locks box, it's um, PPE, it's uh, EpiPen, you know, it's like
But.
emergency response kind of devices all in a single board that hangs on the wall, so it's like.
Easily accessible.
Easily accessible, right there where people need them, kind of a thing.
Yeah, where he knows where it is, yeah.
Um, I know we have AEDs and the locks boxes in the schools, yes.
We have that stuff in the AED box, all that stuff is in the box, yeah.
In that box, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We're more along the lines of choking, uh, I mean choking, that, that teacher saved the child's life.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
That literally saved, saved the child's life and.
We have another one at Whitefield like the next week.
Really?
So that's two in the last month we've had, so I think we need to start considering spending, I, I mean, if we have to get a grant, if I have to write a grant, I'll write a grant, I don't care. But you know, for fifteen hundred dollars, we can get like maybe ten or, you know, whatever per uh, school.
Or school.
Um, if, if it saves one child's life, it's worth millions of dollars, I think, so, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any other new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to the action agenda. Action agenda item number one, to accept unanticipated funds in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars from New Hampshire Student Assistance Network to supplement this student assistance program at White Mountain Regional High School.
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Moved by Chris, second by Evelyn.
With appreciation.
Yes.
Any comments?
Uh, just what, what is the New Hampshire Student Assistant, it just, is it the state, or, yeah, you know, I mean, I know what it is.
Questions?
SAP, SAP. Motion.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I know what it is, I just wanted, the organization, where does the money come from, it's the state?
Yeah, that's. Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
It's state funding that moves through a, a state contractor into the school districts.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I.
Any other questions? Nope, all in favor?
Go ahead.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number two, to accept the following resignations. Deborah Hook, White Mountain Regional School District, social worker, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Terrence Jackson, Whitefield Elementary School, lead custodian, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Well, seconded.
Moved by Ben. Seconded by Chris.
Yeah.
Any questions? None, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number three, to approve the dis- the proposal from Daniel Ebert, Inc. For the nurses' office renovations project at Whitefield Elementary School in the amount not to exceed one hundred nine thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars with funds to come from the buildings and grounds capital reserve fund.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Evelyn, second by Ben, any questions? And Evelyn did a fine job of already describing it.
She did.
All in favor? Any opposed, the motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number four, to approve the proposal from Pelmac Industries for the Secure Access Upgrade Project at Central Office in the amount not to exceed five thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars with funds to come from the Life Safety Code Deficiency Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ben.
My name can come from there.
Any questions? Um, one thing I said that when, when we talked about this, Rob did, did an incredible job, I, this isn't like we got one bid and we like, oh, let's go with it, we, we got several bids.
Yes.
Um, so don't consider it being like, oh, like this is like, you know, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars because it, cause it is. Several of the contracts you contracted never even got back to Rob.
Yeah.
Like never even emailed or anything, so we were pretty short on time, so we made sure that he did his due diligence. Always does. Any other questions?
I think Babe will get his head in the doorway.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number five, to authorize the release of payments up to one thousand dollars per reimbursement for specialized transportation for the remainder of the school year twenty-four, twenty-five and for school year twenty-five, twenty-six.
So moved, so moved.
I'll second that one too.
Ben, moved by Ben, seconded by Evelyn.
A third.
Third by Chris.
Any questions? All in favor?
Oh, sorry, I just, I hope it makes everybody's life simpler.
Yes, it's gotta make you happy, yeah.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
We did it before, we should do it.
No, can't, that, all those are discussions. So for the public, we uh, do need to go into non-public session. There will be three action agenda items when we're done with non-public, unfortunately, the non-public may take a few minutes, you're welcome to wait. But there will be three action agenda items when we come back. So I would need a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon three, section three, I'm sorry, section three, paragraphs B, C, and K.
So moved.
Moved by Chris.
Seconded.
Seconded by James.
Hi Alexis.
Bye.
Thank you Alexis.
Bye Alexis.
Thank you. And a roll call.
Jay Ackerman.
Hi.
E Clint.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so first we need a motion to return to public session.
The owl's eyes on me.
So moved.
I'm now seconded.
Moved by Herb, seconded by Evelyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous, so you don't need to do a roll call. Now I need a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
So moved. Second or second, whatever.
Moved by Herb, seconded by James. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous.
Alright.
Moving on back into public section. Action agenda item number six. To approve the union, non-union professionals and administrative renominations for school year 25-26 as recommended by the superintendent to schools.
So moved. I'll second it.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Chris.
Absolutely.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number seven. To vote to support the superintendent's decision regarding the request for best interest reassignment approvals referred to policy JCA.
I'll make a motion to accept it, so that we can discuss it, and then I'll make a motion to amend it.
I'll second it.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Chris.
Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion to amend it to say to vote, to vote to support the superintendent's decision to deny the request for best interest reassignment approvals per policy JCA.
So the motion is made by Ben to vote to deny, I mean to support the superintendent's decision to deny the request for best interest reassignment approvals referred to policy JCA.
I'll second the amendment.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
No, the amendment's carried. Now you got, now we gotta do it again.
So, okay, I'm sorry. So now is the vote to amend it, action agenda item seven.
There you go.
To vote to support the superintendent's decision to deny the request for best interest reassignment approvals referred to policy JCA.
So moved.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Evelyn. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number eight. To approve the contract with Education Resource Consortium through December 31st, 2026, in the amount not to exceed $35,000 to be paid from the Baugh Foundation grant.
So moved.
Moved by Ben.
Second.
Seconded by Herb.
And make a motion that we table action agenda item eight.
A motion has been made to, by Ben, to table action agenda item eight. Second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is table action agenda item number eight. Any further business? Then I call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Evelyn still has cookies left.
I still have cookies!